Mr. Steppich, we take attendance please.
Certainly.
President Ellisander.
Here.
Vice President Brazington.
Here.
Secretary Steppich, here. Treasurer Guthrie.
Here.
Trustee Donnelly.
Here.
Trustee Schaefer.
Here.
Okay. Item number two, appointment of member to the Board of Education. I have any motion, please? Mr. Donnelly.
I move to appoint Corey Bailey as a trustee to the Board of Education. Mr. Bailey's term will run through December 31st, 2018.
Support.
Support.
Support, Ms. Guthrie. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna take these both of office. Corey, you will stand over here.
We need Mr. Bailey to raise his right hand, correct?
You do.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education.
Of Oxford Community Schools.
Of Oxford Community Schools.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, Corey, let's jump right into the fire. Any changes to the board agenda?
None.
Thank you. Item four, consent agenda. I have a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
With support.
Support.
Mr. Donnelly. Discussion?
Aye.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item five, prearranged request to address the board.
None.
None? Thank you. Item six, we have an item A, Board of Education Matters FOIA Discussion. This was brought up by Trustee Donnelly. And at that point, we didn't have a full board and we kinda wanted to discuss it. So, Mr. Donnelly, do you wanna start us off or would you like me to?
I can maybe kickstart the discussion. Um, this started a little while ago for all of you. As, Corey, you begin to see as you get your emails, that every time there's a FOIA, we get a copy of it and the responses and all that. And so, some time ago, I raised the question as to how many hours of cabinet people are taken up in a five-month, six-month period at a time. And so, we recently got a report, you might wanna ask for that. And so, with that, I also began to ask questions about our fees and what we are charging for them because they don't seem to make sense to the law. The law seems to say that you can charge at the lowest possible hourly rate of the person who can get the information, evaluate the information, and send it. When I did a breakdown of our current charging, we're at $8,000 an hour and there isn't anybody here that's making $8,000 an hour. So, something's wrong with that and I wanna throw that on the table. And I think the third thing that I discussed was, is there a preemptive little committee that we could create that would reach out to our community and kinda be a first filter, attempt to be a first filter to a FOIA? Somebody's got a question, issue, how about you meet with us, we'll talk face-to-face and see if we can solve the issue without having our people jumping through those hoops. So, those are the three things I think that over a period of months, I kinda threw on the table about FOIAs.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Let's kinda break that into two or three different aspects. The number one thing is, um, and who is our current FOIA coordinator?
It'd be Nancy.
Okay, Nancy, can you walk us through that process so that we, so that especially Corey, just coming down the board, understands what we're talking about as far as when somebody sends a FOIA request in, your process?
Okay, so, um, we would receive a request and they can email it, they can actually come in and verbally do it, they can mail it, you know, just whatever format they so desire. And then, we have five days to respond to that FOIA. You know, a lot of times, it will take some assessing to determine, like, who can fill that request? Does it require copying something we already have? Is it on the web? Do we, you know, we just have to really determine where we can get that information. And is any of that information to be retracted, uh, redacted, you know, because we can't send student information, student names and so forth? So, um, we assess that without the request of, you know, who's going to do it, how long it's going to take, and then go from there. So, you know, at times, we'll have to get an extension, we can get up to fifteen days, another ten days. So, we can have up to fifteen days for, if it takes a while to get. So, oftentimes, we have to do that because it just takes a while for people to process and it's not the only thing we do. So, we do have to get that information together and together. So, you know, depending on what format it's in, oftentimes, it can be emailed, sometimes it needs to be copied, just depends. So, you know, all of that can take some time. If you are a nonprofit, you get a deduction from that fee of $20 for each request. So, then we submit it and obviously keep those records for quite some time, so.
So, Nancy, just for clarification, um, request comes in, you look at it, let's just say that three people need to be involved to determine that. Is, uh, is the amount of time that it takes you as the coordinator to contact those people and then receive their stuff and then put it together, is that included in the time or is it just the time to go back and collect that information?
Well, I think that's one thing that Mr. Donnelly pointed out, that yes, it does take some time. Now, you know, because I'm the FOIA coordinator, I'm that first point of contact and, you know, typically, I would do that. I'm just not saying that someone else couldn't do that, but I think we need to be more careful with that time because it really does add up. And, you know, he brings up good points because normally, in, you know, in normal circumstances, we don't get a lot of FOIAs. I would say up until a couple of years ago, you know, you might get a FOIA every six months or once a year or, you know, it's really, um, but when you get bombarded with FOIAs, yes, it does consume time. So, um, to your question, I would say that that, those minutes should be tracked much closer. We talked about, you know, if it is something that requires me to review it and to determine whether or not I need to redact anything, then that's basically my responsibility and therefore, we have to be charged at my rate. So, um, we've talked about, you know, really doing some more tracking on that because it does take away from what we're trying to accomplish here. And, you know, we operate a pretty mean organization and, you know, it's difficult sometimes. We even have to take time out to view a lot of requests.
So, let me say it this way, in the eyes of an attorney, is the organization of collecting that information billable? Is that organizational time billable?
I would say it would be. And we do have a resource that we can, you know, confirm some of that information. But in my mind, if it is, you know, the time to take to organize it, to, you know.
Contact people.
And things like that, yes.
Okay.
So, that, that needs to be addressed.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Steppich.
Thank you. Do we have other organizations, school boards, leadership that we reference to pull in their recommendations or their procedures for processing FOIA?
We work very closely with the NASB. They actually did provide a format for guidelines and we have adopted their guidelines. They worked through, you know, basically the whole state and provided those when FOIA laws changed and, um, you know, that's been a really key kind of tech for us and their attorney has been extremely helpful.
And do they follow their book practices too? Do that include their book?
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah.
Dr. Brazington.
When in the process do you identify how much it's gonna cost to process the FOIA?
So, what I do normally is, I mean, if it's a simple request and we know that it's gonna take less than fifteen minutes, then we don't charge. You know, that's in the guidelines, so that's outlined. If it's going to be an extensive piece, then what I would do is send an estimate to them and let them know what it is. Typically, depending on how much it is, we can get a deposit for half of it down and then we wouldn't give the information until we had received first the deposit and then once the information was ready, then we'd have to get the fee paid when they.
But the estimate can be changed or revised depending on how much time it takes?
Yes, yeah, so you put an estimate and if it takes longer, then you send that final bill before you submit the information.
Okay, then what hourly rate, like what dollar amount are you using for your?
It depends. So, you know, actually now, I've got a spreadsheet that I would use and, you know, depending on who's going to be filling that information, who's the lowest paid qualified person to do that, that's the rate that I would use, so.
Mr. Steppich. In response to Mr. Throne's question, you were talking about some things need addressing. What do you mean by that? What stage of the addressing are you in? Do you need any help from us?
No, I think your support is very welcome, but I think that, um, as I mentioned to Mr. Donnelly, I think it just is going to take, you know, a little more caution in terms of tracking that time. You know, and like I said, I've got a spreadsheet, you know, I have access to everyone's salaries and things, so I can compute those costs and.
So, that's what you mean by addressing, that just keeping a tighter watch on it?
Yes, yeah. And instead of like fitting something in here and there, you know, basically determining, okay, how much time we spend.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Mr. Donnelly?
Oh, yeah, and as I was thinking about this, I was wondering if we've at least got six, seven, eight, nine months' worth of FOIA history. And I would imagine that they're gonna end up falling into three or four categories. That's, one of them's basically an email data search, you know, data mining, which is gonna be a certain individual who will do that. There may be something in the financial realm that Sam's gotta do, there's maybe something in the HR. So, what I'm wondering is, for transparency's sake, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be good of us to be able to say, this is not even exact science, but roughly, if you're gonna FOIA in something in this area, you're looking at this dollar amount per hour charge. If you're looking at something in this area, you're looking at this. So, then nobody gets caught by surprise because we have a history, we have, now, there's certainly gonna be some things outside of those four realms, but 98% of the things are gonna fall into four realms. And then, nobody says, well, I got charged more than someone else and da-da-da-da-da-da. No, it's on, we even put it on the website and said, look, this is just, this is the standard charge because we know what Sam's hour rate is, we know what our HR person's rate is, we know what your rate is, and we know what the maximum is we can charge. So, I just, I'm just gonna encourage you all, in the process of collecting hours better, that some might get surprised now that the price goes up. We might wanna preempt that by simply saying, we've done an evaluation, we've looked back, we've studied, and here's what we learned. And so, here's a fee structure, roughly a fee structure.
I suggest we bill Mr. Donnelly for that information that had to be collected. Well, that's a very good point, um, Mr. Schaefer.
I just had a quick question. Are we only allowed to bill for the lowest qualified person per hour? That's why I think that by law?
Yes.
But there's qualifications. Who can get the information, assess it, and evaluate whether it's sendable? So, it might, you might need, it might take a $12 person to get the data, but an attorney at $200 an hour to judge whether it needs to be redacted or not? So, that's the whole point. It's not based on the lowest possible person in your building, it's based on the lowest possible rate of the individual who ultimately can say, okay, send it.
Yeah.
Ms. Guthrie.
Quick question, pardon my ignorance, but are we fully transparent about how the funds that are collected for FOIA are utilized or where they go? That's another, like, just on the backside. Do we need to be concerned about that, especially if we're considering increasing the amount that's charged?
Those funds go into the general fund. Maybe Sam can speak to any.
Yeah, we just use it as part of our general fund, you know, miscellaneous revenue account that we put that, those funds into. And so, that's just used as part of the overall district's operating costs.
And that's never been questioned about, not in this?
Not to my knowledge. Of course, I've only been here for two years, so that's never been questioned while I've been here. And frankly, it's easy to track because obviously, we have a direct relationship to the revenue that we're receiving from an organization or an individual. And, you know, obviously, we know what we've done in terms of a FOIA request and the response to it. So, it's very easy to relate one, you know, to a relative receiving.
Okay, and I think the second point that Mr. Donnelly brought up was, maybe we have a subcommittee that would sit down and maybe talk to the community members that have a question to maybe stop or be the starting point before a FOIA is requested. I personally have a couple of different views on it. Number one, there's a reason that the Freedom of Information Act is out there. It's a very important process, especially when you deal with taxpayers' money. It's essential to what we do. I think what we need to do as a board is, number one, decide if that's the direction we wanna go, is to have a subcommittee. My thought on that is, the more transparent that we can be, and I can honestly say, we've been pretty darn transparent the last couple of years, in previous, I think that maybe goes away a little bit. That's what the initial thought was and it just seems to keep mounting, keep mounting. So, with that in mind, I think our best step is to have a subcommittee to have those discussions before they get, I don't wanna see anybody charged if we can mitigate the charge that somebody's gonna have to pay. And I certainly don't wanna cause, create a profit center in the district that's labeled FOIA Profit Center. That's not what we're here to do. We're here quite simply to educate students. So, I think we really need to hit this one, nail on the head, and come up with a plan that we're all gonna be comfortable with so that we can move forward because we cannot continue to have this on and on and on and on. We can, I mean, we can't have Nancy doing FOIA information. And maybe we even think about, okay, do we hire one person, that's all they do is handle FOIA requests? Or maybe we get with the surrounding districts and say, you know what, let's all go together and we have one place that all the FOIA requests go to for all four districts, but now you're starting to talk about private information of different districts. So, we have to really think about what way to do this. So, if anybody has any ideas, I'm open.
I think that, I think it's a really big picture, I think it's a great idea to have that as a service to the community, especially if money's increased a little bit for FOIA, to make sure that we were paying the correct rate. I think that's a great, that's how I think it would be well positioned, is, you know, this is how much it costs a FOIA and like Dan just said, if you are interested in meeting with our subcommittee to try to determine if you really want a FOIA or if you have something you'd like to run to the board in a different way, that's fine. My concern is that there aren't firm boundaries around the purpose of that committee and the potential for unresolved issues to be brought to the committee where FOIA is really the answer. So, I think that whoever's on the committee needs to be confident in the ability to discuss what's being brought and also know when to say, this is perfect for FOIA. So, I would recommend that you move forward and FOIA the information. But I think that's just a matter of understanding, you know, the board person or the subcommittee understanding what their purpose is. And that has, I feel like that would have to be very well defined before going into the line's tenet that could potentially be.
And one, and I think one thing we don't want this subcommittee to be is a sounding board for the entire community to just go to two or three board members and say, this is my, this is my problem. That's not the function of the board. It's not a function of the subcommittee to be a sounding board for the community to air grievances or anything like that. But I think it is a very strong avenue to put in place so that people can, you're right, you have to be firm as to, you know, this is where we're all.
This is what we are and what we're doing. It can be piloted, I think that's my thought too, it can be piloted.
Yeah, I think the issue for me is just to turn around my head and I'm a subcommittee, I mean, because basically, as I look at the different FOIA requests that have come in, you know, they really involve, like, the board doesn't know the answers off the top of their heads, it's gonna, I mean, it really involves a Tim or a Nancy or a Ken or a Sam. I mean, I don't think a subcommittee would be of any use unless one of them sat on it type thing and that's gonna involve their hourly, I mean, it just seems like this is gonna be a time consumer of theirs. I don't know. I also don't know how a subcommittee can handle some of the initial questions that come up through these FOIAs.
Schaefer.
I feel the same way. Not that I'm necessarily against a subcommittee, I, in reading the FOIA requests just since I've been on the board, they are all so specific and so detailed in exactly what they want. And they're really not ever happy with the answers they get anyways. They always, there's so many layers to their questions and their requests and they're so intricately involved with human resources and finances and all that. I don't know that a subcommittee of us that don't know and shouldn't know, we're not supposed to be in the day-to-day routine of what's going on, that is not our job. So, I feel like it would be not valuable at all. And I don't think, I mean, we're really talking about one group of people here that have really been requesting these FOIA requests. And they don't want to talk to somebody, you know, so it's the elephant in the room. You know, Team 20 is not interested in a discussion opportunity, they want documentation and they want to go through with their five-foot comb and that's what they want. I just don't know that a subcommittee is happy to help if that's the turn you guys wanna be, but I don't really see the value add.
Ms. Guthrie. Well, I think if you look at the law, first of all, I don't know that we have a right to tell people that they can't or shouldn't do a FOIA, there's a right, they have the right to just go ahead and do it. I agree with that us as a school board member, though we're all smart people, we really don't have the answers that are coming up in the FOIA request. And if you look at the history of the school, there's probably more FOIAs in the last two years than there is in the entire history of this school. So, we're at an anomaly situation where it's, where we just have to deal with it the best we can. This group of people, in my opinion, are just out to make life difficult for us. And that's, that's all that's happening, in my opinion, so we just have to, maybe we hire somebody else to do it, but I think ultimately, it's gonna come to, Sam has to make the decision, Nancy has to make the decision, or whatever, or even Tim. And though I think, you know, Tom, maybe it did, you know, it's a good thought, but it's, I don't see it happening in working in that regard. Because I don't think they wanna make things easier for us. And if that's something that that committee would do, they, they have a right to FOIA, they would just do it. So, I think it's a good waste of time. Mr. Donnelly.
Then I would say, charge them appropriately.
Here, here. I wanna make sure that as we're charging appropriately, we're not, we're not costing the district your time or your time away from other things that are my number one priority. Educating students, balancing the budget, making sure that our staff, their consultants are taken care of, as in regards to HR, I'm sure that's a, that's a full-time job in and of itself. But I also want the community to, the community to know that we take it seriously, we take the fact that this is not just something we throw a number against the wall and say, here, here's a number and we're gonna make it so high that you're not gonna pay it. I do not ever want that to happen. And I just, I wanna make sure that we're doing things the right way every single time. So, if, if you can make sure that you're keeping an eye on those FOIAs that are coming in and that the charges that are being charged are appropriate, I think that's, it sounds a bit the best way that we can, that we can go about it right now, so.
I think the, our best defense is to be as transparent as we can with the information that we have and I think we have been quite transparent. We have a lot on our website that other districts do not. And also, I just wanted you to know, we operate with integrity. So, if there's someone who can fulfill that work that is not top-high salary, that's who will do it. And, you know, that's, that's important to me as well. I'm not going to run up a bill if it's not, if it's not merit, so.
You know, my earlier idea of, we'll just hire somebody to just FOIAs, although it sounds good in theory, you'd have to hire somebody that's pretty high up on the pay scale anyways to be able to understand everything that's coming in from a legal perspective and from a finance perspective and from a HR perspective. So, in theory, it sounds good, but in practicality, it just doesn't work. So, we'll continue to plug along and do the best that we can. Any further questions?
I just wanted to add that, that I think it's kinda like when you have, I mean, aliveness, I hate to equate it to that because I think everybody has a right to their opinion and their need. We're responding to something that we don't control with a controlled, objective response if we do what we just talked about. On the other side of the coin, I think Mr. Donnelly had a great suggestion with, an idea with the subcommittee in terms of, is there a way, I guess this is revisiting the question, if it's not a subcommittee, and I agree that that's probably the best solution, is there a need for additional support to try to treat the, instead of treating the symptoms, treat the cause and offer an opportunity for, you know, those who do come and FOIA frequently, if it's one. if it's one group, if it's multiple groups, whatever, to come and talk to the board. If we open up an opportunity to meet with them separately, if we, what, what could that be? So that we're actually addressing the cause and trying to solve, resolve the issues. And I know that's been done in the past, so.
It has been. And as board, board spokesperson, I will handle that. If they want to come talk, they can talk. I don't have any problems meeting with them. As board spokesperson, I will handle that. Kim handled that in the past. She extended a nodal branch to a couple of different groups and it just didn't work out. But that does mean we can't try it again.
To extend an invitation?
Yeah.
So that's something that you think we should be doing?
If, if, yeah, I mean, if that's something that they want to do, they want to meet with somebody, I'm usually available, so.
Mr. Guthrie.
Tim's done that a lot.
He has.
Yeah. And it, and it doesn't stop. So when you say, you know, solve the, fix the symptom or the, or the cause, can't define the cause.
Well.
Because it goes from one thing to another, to another, to another. And Tim's opened his door as many times as he, as they want.
But I think as an elected official, each and every one of us has an obligation to at least listen to it.
Sure.
And I think that's what women do. So if they want to sit down with Tim and myself, or Nancy and myself, or as a representative and spokesperson, I'll do that. Okay? Sound good? All right. Item seven, curriculum instruction, Mr. Weaver.
Nothing to deny.
Three item, finance and operations, Mr. Barnum.
Good evening. So I have three items, so I am the pen of this board meeting tonight. So what I, so what I have this evening is a recommendation for action. And it's the, includes the ballot language for our November bond. It's a resolution calling for an action.
Okay. I trust you all had an opportunity to read through that. It's, it's very interesting, the verbiage and the language that they use because it has to be very specific.
Absolutely.
It has to be approved by the state. This isn't something that we just make up and throw words in there that, this is a state provided document. I believe Tim and Sam went to Lansing.
And Chuck and Tony.
And Chuck and Tony went to Lansing to present this and it was sent back in this form. So you all had an opportunity to read that. I have a motion on the table.
Mr. Guthrie.
I move to approve resolution calling for the election of the school electors of the district as presented.
Support?
I support.
Support Ms. Guthrie? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Brayston?
Move to approve the annual loan repayment activity application as presented.
Support? Support Mr. Bailey? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item that we skipped over is M and B, and that is the sinking fund discussion. And so I have a presentation for you here, which we'll go into detail. And apologize just because of the setup that we have. Have some of you turn around in your seat to look at either the TV. I think Tim may be trying to turn on as well. The, I think Dr. says some of us. But I want to talk about, so we just got through hearing a little bit about the bond. I know in several meetings previous to this, I was in a high level of detail in regards to what was included in our bond. And so now we're going to talk a little bit about the sinking fund proposal for the November election as well. So as you may recall from many months ago, we had identified improvements to our district buildings and also updates to our buses in some regard. We have some dollars segmented to that for the bond. In addition to that, we have some technology infrastructure, albeit not a lot of money, a hundred thousand dollars. Then we have some security cameras and building access, a hundred and fifty thousand. And then the rest, as you can see, the really big dollars of the bond, as you can see here, are the building systems, site improvements, parking lots, sidewalks. Roofing is a large number as well as you can see. And some playground improvements throughout the district's elementary schools, obviously, as well. So again, this is bond-specific. Total thirty point four million dollars. And again, this is, except for Corey, this is not new to any of you. So how much can we bond? Well, with no tax increase, we can bond for twenty-eight point two eight million dollars. Obviously, as any bond issuance and sale of bonds, there are costs associated with issuing bonds. Obviously, to your underwriters, that's the largest cost. Obviously, you have legal fees, you have Moody's who rates your bonds, you have your financial analyst that you pay, so on and so forth, covering the charges. Those amount to approximately four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. So the net proceeds that we're able to use for facility improvements, should this no-mill increase bond pass in November, is twenty-seven million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So what's the gap in the funding? Obviously, our need is in excess of thirty. We're going to have a little under twenty-seven point eight million dollars. The variance is two point six million dollars. And again, the twenty-seven point eight no-tax increase to our local residents. So what's the strategy for meeting this need, the entire need? Again, we have the twenty-seven point eight million for the bond, for the improvements. We are proposing a four million dollar sinking fund for the remainder. And why four million? I'll get into that detail. But this would fund, this would be funded by a sinking fund. And I'll get into the detail a little. It's a five million dollar or a four million dollar sinking fund over five years, pardon me, which would be point seven five mils per year or annually for those five years. Why a sinking fund? And as I mentioned just now, a point seven five mil sinking fund will allow funding for the district based on our current taxable values within our taxing district, approximately eight hundred thousand dollars a year for five years. So obviously, eight hundred thousand times five years is the four million that fills that gap between what our needs are and what we can bond for. What would that four million dollars be used for? Well, again, I mentioned to you that there's a two point six, six million dollar gap between our needs and what we can bond for. We also came to the conclusion that there are definitely some classroom technology that we can, in need to, upgrade. And quite frankly, a five-year sinking fund is the more appropriate way to do so rather than placing it into a bond, which is over many more years. And so as you know, or as you may know, technology, it's ever-changing. Technology obviously has useful life from a depreciation standpoint of between three and five years. So it makes more sense to use a financing vehicle of a sinking fund rather than a bond. And a bond, you're paying interest. A sinking fund, you know, obviously it is taxed to your local residents, but there's, there's no debt there. There is no interest charges on that. So it's just more appropriate. So again, we've assessed one point two five million district-wide to fund that classroom technology component. And then building security, enhanced building security over and above or in replacement of what we currently have at our buildings. And we're assessing that at approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So again, this sinking fund proposal is a point seven five mil increase in taxes. And so that is again, represents to the district a little over eight hundred thousand dollars per year for five years. Questions, you men? Yes?
What does a point seven five mil increase mean for the average homeowner?
For the average homeowner and your taxable value? So let's just say, for instance, that your taxable value is two hundred, I'm sorry, your market value is two hundred thousand dollars of your home, okay? It's based, however, the mileage on your taxing value, so your SED. So it's usually half of what your market value is. So again, assuming you're the market value of two hundred thousand dollars on your home, you divide that in half, it'd be a hundred thousand dollar taxable value. And you multiply that times, basically, you divide it by a thousand and multiply it times point seven five mils, it's seventy-five dollars is the short answer to your question.
Seventy-five dollars per year, per five years.
Correct. So, well, when you say per five years, you're paying, that person is paying seventy-five dollars a year, each year during those five years.
And that seventy-five dollars, and I want to be clear, that seventy-five dollars is over and above what there already.
That is correct.
Yeah. So our original party presentation is, the twenty-eight million is no additional cost.
Correct.
That's seventy-five dollars more per year.
Correct. For the sinking fund proposal?
For the sinking fund proposal. Now, what, and that only, the sinking fund proposal is only going to cost that person, myself, everybody else, seventy-five dollars per year for five years or for the life of that, how long does that go?
It goes for five years.
For five years.
Yes.
So it's seventy-five dollars per year for five years.
Exactly. And that it ends.
And then, last part of the question, and sorry for adding on and adding out, but I'm trying to understand.
Absolutely.
I know we're going to get asked a question.
Absolutely.
Currently, our bond debt goes up to what year?
Two thousand and thirty-seven.
And does this increase that?
No, because it's not debt. It's a sinking fund.
But if we go up for the bond?
The bond, it does. It extends it by three years, that is correct.
So three years. So now, instead of twenty twenty-seven, thirty-seven, we're looking at twenty forty.
It extends the, yes, three-year debt.
I don't make any of this. I mean.
It doesn't.
Good lord, that's.
So that's a great, that's a great question.
I'm early.
That may be the case. The bottom line, though, is, again, it extends for three years, longer than it normally, for the bonds. Not the sinking fund.
That's not debt.
That's not debt.
Sure.
I mean, is it need for both the bond and the sinking fund? I think you were right on track with identifying the needs and the needs of the great job. You know, what if type thing? What if one, like what if this bond doesn't pass, but the sinking fund does?
That would be strange, but it could happen. So, and, yeah, so these are two separate bond, or these are two separate ballot proposals. So the sinking fund would be second on the ballot. The first thing, obviously, the first item, first proposal would be for the bond, which is again, a little increase. And so there's a potential that, you know, we think that the bond could, could actually fail even though there's no mileage attached to it, no increase attached to it, but the sinking fund could pass. So in that regard, you know, we'd be in a little bit of a precarious spot, quite frankly, because again, it is additional revenue to the district, but our need is so much greater than, as you can see, than what we've been receiving, so. We'd have to really reconvene as a district to figure out.
Yeah, I mean, we would actively, you know, is our district planning to actively solicit votes for both the bond and sinking fund, both that proposals? Like we sort of like.
I dare use the word actively solicit as a district.
Like we want to promote.
Yes, definitely promote it. Definitely want to promote it.
And I guess.
From a factual standpoint, absolutely. Yes, yes, the, the, the short answer is yes. We will definitely be communicating very quickly, actually, within the next several weeks. Actually, next week, we are giving a presentation to our administrators and basically rehashing both the bond and the new sinking fund language and detail. And then giving them the tools and the resources to not only be knowledgeable, but also spread the word and be educated themselves. So if asked in the community at Meyer, at a restaurant, they are well-versed at the facts, so.
And I get a lot of parent input as the list became larger and larger. Did the sinking fund idea come up at all during that parent discussion group?
You know, this, it did. You know, again, it did come up during that. But again, as you are well aware, just from the sheer need of the district need from a building and transportation perspective, you know, you, we, we have a large bus fleet. You know, we have over fifty buses. And, you know, frankly, you, the, the bond can only purchase a certain amount because we have so much facility need. So with sinking fund proceeds, you cannot use sinking fund proceeds to purchase buses. So it really limits us to what we can do from that perspective. So that's why we, you were being very specific with the sinking fund, going after that gap in funding, going after technology, which we know, again, changes very rapidly and really puts us as a district in a more favorable spot from a technology standpoint, a safety standpoint.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Mr. Guthrie.
Back to your communication information plan about the, the opportunity to vote for these two items. Is there a plan in place now for taking, going beyond the administration and developing materials? And do we have a creative opportunity to, to get the information out there in a way that will get different demographics, different groups of people, get their attention?
Yes, just on a district level.
Gotcha.
So that's the short answer as well, yes.
Does the board have, do we need to help with that?
Yes.
Sam brings up a very good point. There is new rules and regulations on how that is done. So we need to make sure that everybody understands what those rules and regulations are as, as they pertain to a board member and as it pertains to staff of the district. So I'm sure as we go down the road, we'll get all that language together and. Any other questions, Ms. Burns?
These are all of them.
Mr. Donnelly.
So just maybe one final comment. I want to summarize to make this clear. We've asked our internal people, we've asked our parents, what are our needs? And resoundingly, they came back and said, we need to take care of those investments we've already made in our buildings. We want parking lots, we want sidewalks that aren't all busted up, we want roofs that aren't linking, we want some new buses, and we'd like our students to have updated technology. In those discussions, while the sinking fund was a possibility, we really didn't invoke that conversation at that time because we didn't know what our overall needs were going to be and we didn't know what our bondability was going to be. And so I didn't feel it was prudent that we come right out of the gate and say, yep, we're going to ask for a sinking fund and we're going to ask for two mils for ten years. Because we didn't know that. And so we, we now have identified our total needs, what it would take, how to refund that gap. And we want to be forthright with our community and ask them specifically for what it is that we need. We're, we're not asking them for an additional five million dollars to see what happens or that we can just put it off to the side and use it as needs come up. No, we're, we're asking specifically for what we've identified and what our parents and our community have said they'd like to see. And so now is our time to come back and say, this is how we are going to try and fulfill those needs. And we have two different financial vehicles to do that. Obviously, our, our normal operating budget will continue to support our programs. But when you look at the type of need that we have, we, we simply can't use our operational dollars. When our overall operational budgets, I'll just say fifty-two million, and eighty percent of that is strictly salaries and benefits. So that leaves you twenty percent. So now we're down to roughly, whatever, ten, eleven million dollars. Well, that's, that's still got to pay for. Well, that's still got to pay for gas and heat and electricity and curriculum and all those other things. We, we just, there's no way through operational dollars to put million-dollar roofs on new buildings, to put hundreds of thousands of dollars in heating and cooling, to be more efficient, for LED lighting, to improve the safety of the walkways. And all those things that we've identified. And so I just want to just remind everybody in the public, again, why we're doing this at this time, why we're using the vehicles, the financial vehicles that we've chosen, and why we have selected the amounts that we've selected.
Any other questions?
The language that you provided in the board packet on the sinking fund mileage proposal, did that also get presented to?
It will. So I will bring that to our next board meeting for formal board approval. I technically have to have that done by August the fifteenth in order for it to be included in the November ballots because it has to go to the county clerk, who's working up here in Oakland County. But I first wanted to discuss it obviously with you and then bring it to you for your approval of the next board.
I appreciate the proposal. Well done, thank you.
I guess maybe I have a question for Tony and Chuck. It's a two-part, maybe you both can answer it. The, everything that's proposed that we have right now on the twenty-seven million, what is that? That gets us everything on your list that you presented in April, correct?
It falls short by two and a half.
Two and a half, the sinking fund. Yeah.
Without the sinking fund, the deductions won't be up.
Clarify that. If we pass, if both of them are passed, then it takes care of everything on your list, the sinking fund and the bond, it both takes care of everything on our list.
Correct.
Okay. And then to follow up on that, and I know construction costs have gone up because the economy has gotten much stronger and, you know. So I would anticipate us having cost savings, maybe like we had in our last bond. But if there are anything like that, is there already items on our contingency list that we would like to add, rather than say, oh, we've got this extra half million dollars? Addition, okay. So we have a contingency plan that's, I guess my point that I want to, and it's not a question, it's more a point. The point that I want to make now is that if we have an extra money, I think we need to let our public know exactly what that money is going to be spent right up front. If we have extra money, this is what it's going to. I don't want it to be, well, we have an extra five hundred thousand dollars and what does everybody want? I want to spend the money the way that we tell everybody we're going to spend it.
All right, Keith. Any further questions? Thank you, Sam. And we have the two recommendations. I deny you resources. Nancy?
Well, I would thank the board for approving the personnel recommendations that were made. The three hires that are on the board agenda were Caitlin Webb, who will be a Spanish teacher, Daniel Xford, Kristen Dochy, who will be at the Virtual Academy in Elementary, and Caroline Quint at the, she'll be at the high school with special education. So I'll very excited, I'm excited about these hires and I'll have more to you next time. So going. So we, the next item is recommendation for action on the Actuary Administrators' tentative agreement. We reached an agreement. The group has approved their tentative agreement and I'm just bored to prove that.
Okay, we have a recommendation for action.
Move to approve the tentative agreement between the Actuary Administrators' Association and Actuary Training Schools for the period of August first, two thousand seventeen through July thirty-first, two thousand twenty, as previously discussed.
Support? Support Ms. Guthrie? Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I intend to do services. Denise?
We're busy enrolling and reviewing policy.
Okay. Speaking of policy?
There we go.
We have second readings. Who did the first reading? Someone wants to pick up another stat.
I move to approve a second reading of policy numbers five-one-one-one-point-zero-one, homeless students, five-one-one-one-point-zero-three, children and youth in foster care, five-six-one-zero, emergency removal, suspension, and expulsion of non-disabled students, five-six-one-zero-point-zero-one, expulsion slash suspensions required by statute, five-six-three-zero-point-zero-one, student seclusion and restraint, eight-three-three-zero, student records.
Support? Support Ms. Shaker? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment twelve, unscheduled audience participation. None? Clarification, Mr. Trump? Oh, we've got some scheduled activities. Next board meeting is August eighth, right here at the Board of Education Office, six-thirty. August twenty-second, Board of Education meeting, here again at the Board of Education Office, six-thirty. And it's coming and it's got to be addressed August twenty-eighth, first day of school. Final board comments, Shaker?
Thank you very much, Sam. Lots of work, I'm sure, going into preparing for the bond and Tony and everybody. I know you guys put a lot of time into that. I know your list is long.
Got a brief interview.
So it's really very informative. You're always so informative and I appreciate it. I know we're going to all start getting a lot of questions and we're all going to have to work really hard to make sure that we get that passed because that is very needed money. So thank you very much for putting the time in. And I know you put a lot of time and work into all your stuff too. So thank you. And Nancy?
Mr. Dr.?
Corey, welcome.
Oh, I'm welcome.
And yeah, working closer with you guys, the amount of work that you do is, and how well you do it is really good to see. So thank you very much.
Dr. Raisson?
I told them, Sam, well, I'm cool.
Corey, you want to make any statements? I want me to put you on the spot, but I didn't want to cut you out either.
Well, thank you for your support. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm looking forward to working with all of you and engagement for these discussions, getting up to speed.
Ms. Guthrie?
I want to echo all three of my fellow board members and thanking Sam and his team. Thank you all for such diligent, hard, detailed work and good information. I wanted to thank Nancy for her work on the FOIA's once again and for being able to come and talk to us about what, what that means so that we can hopefully help with something and do what's right for the district. And then I want to thank Tom as well for bringing that up and thinking about ways to be socializing. Thanks, everybody.
Mr. Dr.?
Thanks to Dan for running a take-me.
Right down.
Sam, I haven't run them in the past.
Don't, don't, don't.
I know.
Don't ask a question you don't want.
Take me there.
But I would like to thank Ken number two down there. Definitely a great presentation. It really does help us. People, really, on the community, ask us questions a lot of times and we really don't know the answers to. So it is helpful when you guys can provide it like that for us. And hopefully get both of these passed. Welcome, Corey. I'm looking forward to working with you. And that's it.
Well, I'll welcome Corey as well. Look forward to working with you here. Any questions that you may have, let me know. If I can't answer them, I'll pick up the answer.
Appreciate it.
I want to thank Nancy and Sam and Ken and Denise, not just for the work that you do and the pack. It's summer and it is seven-thirty and you're here and you've been here all day. And I just want to thank you for, you know, as they say, everybody thinks that the, everybody in school is just out for the summertime, but that's really when you guys are really well under sleep, just getting the meat and potatoes of what our mission is to do, and that's to educate kids. So thank you both for working very much. Same with you, Tim. It's, yeah, summertime is, I think, a cool view, is the time to make hay. So I appreciate that. And I want to thank Tom for, you know, your thoughts about FOIA. It's definitely something that I think we needed to talk about. It's something that we needed to wrap our heads around to see if we can, you know, make ourselves better, make ourselves more informed and do the things that we were elected to do. We had a conversation about it. So hopefully it alleviates some things in the future, but if not, we'll just keep addressing them. With that, Trump?
Thank you. I apologize for jumping in there earlier. I do really want to be crystal clear with our community when it comes to this bond and exactly what, what the traditional bond is paying for, what the sinking fund would be paying for, and if there were to be any savings, what we would use those for ahead of time. I just, I think the more clear and upfront we can be in our planning and in our communication, our community will see and understand that and then they get to vote. And so I'm appreciative of the entire team, IDS, Clark. Yeah, I'm looking forward to the days ahead. I've had a couple of really good meetings over the last week with, boy, all the levels of the political spectrum and with some additional superintendents. And, and I'm excited for the days ahead. I think we got some really good things that we're working on and I am really proud of our community, what we've done, where we've come, and even where we're going. I think our best days are ahead of us, so thank you.
Okay. With that, it's good to be a Wildcat. You adjourned.